...the Board of Education order. Mr. Genitis, you have the invocation in the moment of silence.
I just found out I had this, so. Just gonna see how long it can like. I hope that the opening of the schools went well, the schedules are all straightened out, the bus routes and pickups are all taken care of. And just for more in the silence, I'd like to say that the moment of silence for the world and our country, because it's the British after the American Revolution, after it, the world's been turned upside down.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Genitis. Fire evacuation announcement, in event of an emergency or fire, you to proceed to the emergency access located to the rear of the chamber or down the stairs to my left. Please go out to the parking lots. Kathy, may I have roll call, please?
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Peabody?
Present.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mr. Wauer?
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Chairman Serrard?
Here.
Board guests, Dr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight it's our pleasure to welcome our 2015 Teacher of the Year, Connie Mazetta. Connie is a teacher in the Hazerville Memorial Integrated Preschool Program, and she is here tonight, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the work she does at Hazerville Memorial, and maybe a little about the process she went through to become our Teacher of the Year, and then certainly she'd be interested in answering any questions you have.
Connie?
Thank you for having me here tonight.
I mean, is the red light on?
Yep. My position with Enfield Public Schools has always involved the special education preschool program, and my work is primarily centered around working with children who have significant developmental disabilities, primarily autism. I've been a special education teacher for about 20 years, and about five years ago, I sought board certification as a behavior analyst and completed that program and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction at the University of Massachusetts. And that has definitely helped inform my practice as a special education teacher, working with these children with special needs. And I am very honored to represent the program and the little children I work with and the exceptional teachers that I work with as well. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the program or the process of the Teacher of the Year.
Mr. Peabody?
First of all, congratulations, and second, thank you for the good work that you do. I used to be a member of the Elks, and we took Autism Happens on as our charity, that one of the charities that we supported. Question is, there's been so many diverse conversations regarding autism. It may be a difficult question to ask, but what is this? If you had to put your finger on one single common problem that you have to solve, or your biggest challenge, what would it be?
One of the core deficits for all people with autism is communication. So developing appropriate communication skills is the single greatest problem that people with autism face.
Thank you.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
I would just like to say congratulations, and I'm very happy and proud of you that you won this award. You helped a very dear friend of mine this past year with her son, who is autistic, and he is in kindergarten this year, and it really meant a lot to her to have your advice and to help her along. So it really, it really meant a lot. I think what people don't realize is just that little bit of help, or just that little bit of advice on a day-to-day basis for someone who, who has an autistic child, you gave her a lot of support and a lot of confidence to move forward and have him go to kindergarten. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Neville?
Connie, congratulations. You couldn't have a better person represent, I think, Enfield Public Schools, and special ed and autism is near and dear to my heart, and your name has come up many times in conversation with my wife. She thinks you're the best. And I've heard all the positive stories about what you do in practice and what you do for parents, and certainly we all know the value of the early intervention, particularly with autism. The earlier we get to those youngsters, the more success they can have. So, congratulations. Couldn't be happier for you. I applaud you also for all the work I know you did this summer to get ready and get your packet ready and get all this stuff together to be Teacher of the Year, but I know you'll represent Enfield well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Genitis?
Again, congratulations. Are you over at Stowe?
Not yet.
But you will be?
We will.
Are you aware of what's going on over there?
I am.
Would you like to give them a good shout-out, as to, tell us and the public, what's, what do you think of everything?
We're very excited about the early learning center being developed at Stowe School. We will be moving over there as soon as it's feasible. We're currently at Hazerville Memorial School, but I think in terms of resources and developmentally appropriate practice, this move to an early learning center is not only exciting, but very appropriate for all of our students. So we're excited, and we deeply appreciate the support of the community in this regard.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say congratulations. They don't put names in a hat and just pull out anybody, so I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Connie, as Ms. Ungeyer just said, Teacher of the Year is an important thing for our district, and as the Teacher of the Year, because of the person that you are, you represent the best qualities of our staff and our district, and I sure am speak with, for the whole board when I say we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being you, because you are just awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again, Connie. Dr. Schuman, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up first, we have the student representative report. Just recently, Mr. Serrard and Mr. Dreschek, Mr. Longy and I met with Caitlin and Lila, and they are our new representatives from Enfield High School, and she is here, Caitlin is here with us tonight. Tom and Eric are returning from Fermi High, something has got them occupied this evening, and they're not with you. In your package, you do have some information they sent. They'll be getting us their emails, addresses, and Caitlin, before you leave tonight, if you could do that, so we could get more information to you out in the packet, but she is here and can share anything she'd like at this point about Enfield High School.
Go ahead, Caitlin.
Parking has been tough. That's the main thing that everyone's worried about. There aren't nearly enough spaces, but I think all the students are making it work with carpooling. Every single parking ticket has, or parking pass, has been sold already. Mr. Longy wanted to remind everybody that open house is next Thursday. He wanted to make sure that everyone knew that. But besides that, construction's been a little tough. The gyms are a little different. We have to go down to the field rather than having an actual gym. The gym should be back sometime in the spring, I'm assuming. Besides that, everything's running smoothly. We're making it work. All of the kids are okay with the construction, they're working around it. The freshmen are a little, I think, nervous around it, because they haven't been, they haven't experienced it yet, but everyone's starting to get back into the swing of things.
Thank you, Caitlin. Dr. Schuman?
There are a few other items here. The Rachel's Challenge Week, the week of September 14th, the Started Chain Reaction events will be going on through the schools. Family Day is September 20th on the town green. There are, under D, a list of some September events, some open houses, curriculum nights, and as Caitlin mentioned, the open house at the high schools. And E is an important one. The NEASNC accreditation visit will begin in October, on October 25th, at JFK Middle School. The visiting team will arrive Sunday afternoon, and they'll leave on Wednesday afternoon, and during that time, they'll spend time talking to lots of individuals, board members, administrators, teachers, students, and then observing classrooms and reviewing in-depth the self-study that the staff created last year. It's a very important process, it's a good reflective look for us to have someone come in and take a look at what we think we're doing well and what we think we need to do a little bit better. They will then issue a report for us several weeks after that for us to review. The board will be scheduled to meet with the visiting committee on Sunday, October 25th, in the afternoon. We don't have the exact schedule yet, but Mr. Salgowski, Mr. Dreschek and myself met with the two co-chairs earlier in the week, and they started to formulate what that schedule would look like. But typically, the visiting committee meets with the board on the first Sunday, because that's when board members are most available. So they meet with parents and board members on Sunday, and then they work with staff and things. So if you could please reserve the afternoon of October 25th to meet with the visiting committee, that would be great, and we'll get you more details as they become available.
Ms. Ungeyer, you can ask the superintendent a question.
Do you know what time the Rachel's Challenge is tomorrow at JFK and Fermi? Yeah. You don't know what time? I couldn't find the time.
It's usually, like, today at Enfield High, they went to homeroom, and then they went right over to Enfield Street School. So I don't think they had any classes, and I don't think they got back till 1:45. Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Audiences. Catherine Smith. Please state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments down below five minutes.
Hi, my name is Catherine Smith. I'm at 17 Iroquois in Enfield. I'm also the president of the FIM, the Friends of Instrumental Music, at Enfield High School. We had our parent meeting recently, last week, and I'm glad that the kids are all set with everything. Parents are a little nervous on the changes coming up in the fall, around Thanksgiving, when we're supposed to vacate the band room. A little worried about where we're going to go. Mr. Longy has said that Miss Assener, Saint Silver Dandiran, is going to be in the cardio room. And the biggest fear we have is that it's not big enough for our band, much less next year, when it, when everybody comes together and the band is almost 200 kids. I mean, they need not only the room for, like, individuals, but they need room for their music stands, their seats, their equipment, which can range from a clarinet or flutopiccolo to a timpani or three timpanis. I mean, so we've been assured that it's going to be big enough. We're a little leery, nobody will tell us exactly how big it is. The band room is like three-dimensional, there's tiers, there's lockers, there's closets, there's closets and closets. So that's one of our concerns. The other concern that the parents have is that, who's going to pack? Where's everything going to go? Are the students going to be doing this in their free periods? Is the teacher going to be expected to do this when she should be teaching the students? It's just concerns that we had. That is, I mean, it's not like packing up the math room and putting all the books in a box. It's way, way, you look, when they moved to JFK over the summer for their band camp, the teacher came in, I guess, and put everything in the middle of the room that was supposed to be moved, and things, the gong stand, I guess, was broken, that wasn't even going to be moved. So we're concerned. I, you know, unless you're going to buy all new instruments with the new high school, you know? And that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Melissa Denali?
Pass.
Pass? So you're not speaking tonight? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? There's three times. Okay. Board member comments. Mr. Genitis?
You sure will. You want me to go first?
Go ahead.
I've got about 20 minutes of stuff I'd like to say, so I'm going to break it up into the next four meetings. I'll just start tonight. Since, since it's going to be, after tonight's meeting, only three more meetings for me, because I'm not going to be running again, there are some things I'd like to say, some things I'd like to comment on, there's some things I'd like to give some strong opinions on, and hopefully some things that the next Board of Education will have some things to think about. I won't say everything I have to say tonight, but I will start tonight. Six years ago, after teaching for 38 years, I wanted to and I was able to get elected to the Board of Ed three times. I did so for specific reasons. I didn't like what I heard that was being presented to the public by the Board of Education, by the central office, by administrators. Some things were very distorted, not really happening. Some things were fluffed up and packaged and presented to make everything look good. Some things made teaching more difficult, and they took away from preparation time and lower teacher morale. Some things, as Donald Trump would say, were just stupid. Now, after the last four years, I just shake my head in wonderment. I'll give credit when and where credit is due, and I think Greg Stokes did a nice job as a board chairman, for the most part. In November, that doesn't mean I'm going to vote for him, because I'm not. The last two boards, I personally have been rather disappointed in. Open and transparent means just that. Keep the public informed, let them know what's going on, be truthful, and above all, keep politics out of the Board of Ed. No behind-the-scenes deals, I'll give you this if you give me that, no BS to the public, no playing games, taking marching orders from some members on the town council and party leaders. This November, I truly hope one party gains control of the Board of Ed and the town council, and works together openly and honestly. Six years ago, when the Republicans gained control of the town council and the Board of Ed, we worked together. The Republican town council members and the Board of Ed members held some joint caucuses together. We argued and yelled at one another, as we tried to come up with what we thought was best educationally for the kids in this town. We had the graduation issue, we had the reorganization issue, we had debate on whether or not there should be a ninth-grade academy, should we send the sixth graders to JFK all at once or half? We had a good negotiation season, we had the busing issues, we had to hire a new superintendent and his staff, we had to get the ball rolling on the high school and worked out details on how to get the most money from the state. We got the ball rolling and finally completed on the all-day kindergarten. We spent tons of money on new textbooks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We did what I thought collectively was best for Enfield. As confusing as it got at times, I think we did what was right. I'm sorry that we had to do away with the neighborhood schools, and I'm sorry we cut athletics at the middle school. A lot of the choices we made, I think, cost us the majority on the board, but I walked away with a clean conscience. It is my desire that the next board and town council work together openly and honestly, and to keep the public truly informed. And finally, two quick points. I'm glad to see that the board, or some members of this board, have come to the realization that the Fermi reuse committee was a disaster. Good news is, after the next budget season, hopefully before April, that the Fermi issue will be back on the table. I'm glad tonight that after this board meeting, we'll be going into executive session and finally wrapping up the superintendent's evaluation, three months after he was given a raise and an extension of his contract. And lastly, I'd like to sincerely thank all those people, some who I know, some who I recognize, and some who I don't even know, who have said how disappointed that they were that I was not running again, and how glad I was on the board for as long as I was. It's I who have to thank you for your support and kind words. That's the end of my rant for today, and I'll start again at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Genitis. Mr. Peabody?
Thank you. First of all, Mrs. Smith, I've been championing, my boys were in the music program over at the other place called Fermi, and I appreciate and have spirited, very spiritedly questioned why the music program was not taken consideration as a full academic program. I understand that some people only think of music as band. Well, I've said many times in the board that it's not, it's an academic program. You'll find, at one time, I, it was over 80% of the band members were honor students. So I think the board understands it, and I think there was some schedule changes that are going to be inconveniencing a lot of people, and I know that after conversations with Dr. Schuman and his team, that they're working to figure things out, so it's as much of a small impact as possible. Stay tuned, I'm sure more work's going on, but people understand it, understand the situation. We have a band of 200-plus kids. It's going to be a powerful band. I watched Enfield High, I was at the game on Saturday night, and I watched Enfield High come out there, and I was just wicked proud of those kids, and Jen, who is, took a program out of the ashes and turned it into a phoenix, and have it rise up to be an outstanding program. Wait till next time. It's going to be even better, I'm sure. Moving on, there's a reason why I have this shirt on tonight, a field hockey shirt, as Tina will tell you. I have no clue of the rules on how field hockey's played, but I did, I wore this shirt because I made a commitment to some teachers I saw a couple of weekends ago. I'm wearing this for Amy Romano. Amy Romano was the head teacher at Asnuntuck, I mean, Asnuntuck, at Alcorn. She was a three-time Hall of Fame member for the state of Connecticut, the Town of Enfield Athletic Hall of Fame and Assumption College Hall of Fame. She was a stalwart coach who taught her children, her students, her players, more than just a game of field hockey. And I find this, I never met Amy Romano, but I found this out through listening to various teachers and some parents. And the whole weekend of 29th and 30th was about Amy Romano. They had a scavenger hunt, which a team called the Sarcasm Foundation, one that I could really appreciate, won the day. There was a field hockey tournament with teams from Massachusetts and deep into Connecticut participating, and this is all done for one purpose, to raise scholarship money that's administered by the Enfield Athletic Hall of Fame. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Marie Pizner, who drove this thing to success, the Athletic Hall of Fame, namely Michael Cottner and Tim Jensen, for putting in tons of time, and other people who I don't know. But it's all done for a single purpose, to give our student athletes an opportunity to, to get a little more cash going out to college, which, as you all know, is averaging around $100,000 a year. Some other things that I found out over the past couple of weeks are SAT scores. And one of the things I'd like to ask Dr. Schuman and his team to do is, could you please start posting our scores, all of our scores? Ellington does it. I had no problem finding Ellington's scores. I had to work to find our own school's test scores, so they do it. Like Peter was saying, and one of the things that I've been screaming about is transparency. We've got to show people what we do well, but we also have to show them where we need to improve, and that's the foundation for all budget requests. It's same, it's in corporate America, and it should be here in our town. And that would greatly chip away the arguments that we do have from people who don't know the values of our school brings, our school system brings. I won't go into the scores, but the averages were 1513 for Fermi and 1441 for Enfield High. The other schools around there, around us, Southfield was 1602, Summers was an aggregate of 1561, and Glastonbury, one of the bellwethers we kind of compare ourselves to, was 1687. So here, so after meeting our former chief academic officer and discussing with her in curriculum, and our current chief academic officer, Michelle Middleton, I know, I feel confident that our programs are geared up to improve those scores. But when I thought about it, there's a big difference, and the difference is that the parents in those communities do pay for extra help and teach kids not to take the test, but how to take the test. SAT questions are tricky, and they ask the same question multiple times in different So in regards to our transition, and again, I'm confident that Dr. Schuman will handle that and get those improvements. In regards to the new high school, we have a band of 200-plus kids, we have new football teams coming together, we need new uniforms, we need this. Last year, I was asking for a transition budget, I haven't seen it. These are one-time expenses that I think the council would, would welcome, in a way, not welcome, in fact, the guy spent some more money, but it would really help us out because we don't want to take transition costs out of our operating budget. Very much against that. So what I would like for next meeting, if possible, or soon, is a transition report, how we're doing, what, are we on schedule, off schedule, not just for, for the building, but for the migration from Fermi to Enfield. That would be a big help for a lot of people. People are starting to ask me when I'm out and about what's happening. So I think that would be great if we, as a board, could, could address that. That's all I got. Oh, congratulations on the new school year, wishing everybody the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peabody. Ms. Ungeyer? Thank you, Ms. Ungeyer. Secretary Grady?
Well, I was able to attend the first day of school, Parkman's, Parkman School on Waymouth Road. It went very well, the parents letting their kids go and actually go to class, when now, you know, the kids tearing up and all that stuff. It was a nice transition. And also attended the back-to-school picnic there tonight. It was actually a good crowd there, and a bunch of kids getting, playing with each other, and parents talking to each other about certain issues and all that stuff, but a well-planned event for Parkman. I do have one request through the chair to the superintendent. We're both part of the security committee that, for schools, and we haven't had a meeting in months. They keep on getting canceled by the current town manager, and I was told that the town council wasn't giving him the go-ahead to have meetings, but I'd like to get an update on where we are on the school's security. It seems like ever since the guards went away, it seems like the whole security thing, topic went away. So I'd like to see where we are on the grants, where, where we are in hardening, hope we're not dropping a ball on that, and if we have to have our own meeting of our, our own to get that, but I would like an update soon, if possible, give us an idea of what's going on, if that's possible. I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Grady. Ms. LeBlanc?
Just a couple of things. Today was the Rachel's Challenge at Enfield High, and both of my kids got to participate, and every year, they could, they could participate every year, and the impact on them never changes. It is such a powerful tool. Usually they say about 100 kids per session, and I just wish we could offer it to all the kids, because it's, it's incredible. It doesn't look like we're having the, the night sessions for the parents this year, is that right?
You had what?
We're not having the Rachel's Challenge in the evening for the parents?
Correct.
Yeah. Although it wasn't well-attended, the parents that did attend it, it was, it was very powerful, and I just love the fact that it's in our schools, and the kids benefit from it in so many ways. I was also at the Enfield High football game, and I got to see the Enfield High band, and your concern has become our concern, based on what the building committee told us at the last meeting. So that's definitely that something is on the horizon, especially because the whole, what are we going to do with Fermi, became such a hot topic. I feel like we have bigger fish to fry right now. We have to figure out what we're going to do with the band, what we're going to do with the transition to Fermi. You know, we have the election coming up, we have the budget season, and I really feel like our focus needs to be on what's going on in the school right now. I understand your concerns, especially if you're a band parent at either school, because if, if the band room's not ready, you know, that, that could be an issue. So I understand your concerns, and I'm hearing it, and I would like to get something going, whether it's like a subcommittee or some updates that we get on the agenda, starting very soon, as far as that goes. Also, the Fermi girls and the Enfield High girls played in a soccer scrimmage in the rain last Thursday. There is a picture floating around that I'd like to get a copy of to put on the website, but one of the moms, after the game, she took a picture of the girls all together, and she said, you know, Fermi and Enfield High get together. So at first, it was like Fermi was in white and Enfield High was in green, and she's like, no, you're going to integrate, because some of them have best friends on the other team, relatives. That was a great picture, and, and the little write-up she did for it. So I'd like to, to get a copy of that and put it, I thought that I thought that was really nice for the mom to do that, and the girls loosened up and started to laugh after that. So that was, it was just really nice to see. And lastly, the curriculum nights are coming up. I forgot about the Enfield High one, so I'm glad you said something. JFK is next week, and as well as Enfield High. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Mr. Neville.
A couple of things, just to echo your comments about Rachel's Challenge. It's such a positive effect. I don't know whether they're going to look at doing this like every other year or something to bring their parents in, but I think to keep the process going, I'd hate to see it go down, get down the tube, just from, you know, the lack of whether funding it or dealing with it. So I'd like to kind of hear from the superintendent at some point where we're headed with that to maintain it. In terms of the comments that were made about the band room and the transition and all that stuff, I think a lot of the details aren't out yet, okay? There is an active transition committee that the superintendent is running, and I know they meet with the folks from the building committee as well. And they're working on a number of things to take us through that transition. And certainly, the band room has not been forgotten, or how we're going to deal with that. And it's a, something has to be dealt with over, you know, a long period of time. So they haven't forgotten it. In terms of the packing and all that stuff, those are all the nitty-gritty things that are being worked on as well. I know what's going on in some of the other things, and I know the moving is pretty well- orchestrated, that's going to happen in November, at least from what I've heard at the building committee. So yeah, I think it's important to bring it up, but I want you to know that it hasn't been pushed aside. It's being worked on. And I think through the chair to the superintendent, if we could get maybe an update at some point that's reasonable, as to some of the things that are going to be, that have been discussed and are going to happen with the transition. I know you can't give us, you know, all the details at this point, but I think all of us are getting questions from folks. And I think information takes care of the questions that people have. So if we could get some more information out, maybe do an update at a future board meeting, I think that would be good. Had a comment from somebody, a parent, today about the Eli Whitney Playground. I know we got a notice, maybe the last week or so, that it was being shut down until further notice, until something could get done. There, I'm not sure what the details are in that, and I don't know whether you know the details, Dr. Schuman, but if not now, then at a later date, if we could get something out as to what's going to be done and what's the end date when it will be back in service, because I know it's something that the whole school and the community would like to use. Terms of the comments about the test scores that Mr. Peabody was talking about, I think one of the nice things about it is that they're going in the right direction. We're seeing the scores rise, we're seeing more kids participate, we're also seeing more kids participate in AP testing and stuff like that. I think those are all powerful things, and the trend is in the right direction. And maybe at some point, we could have, through the curriculum committee and with the superintendent's blessing, have an assessment report done in terms of how we're doing, so that, again, the transparency issue, so folks know what we're doing. There's a lot of good things going on in this community, and I don't think we toot our horn enough about the good things. We get caught up in a lot of other things, but we have wonderful kids, we have kids that are working hard, we have staff that's just doing a superb job, and I think we need to get out those successes and highlight those successes that we have. And kind of picking up on what Mr. Grady said, Mr. Peabody and I are on the IT Committee, the joint committee with the council members, and that meeting was canceled this summer again, and I don't know what the reason was. My real issue is that we think it's an important topic, and we'd like to get it rescheduled. So through you, to the superintendent, if we could get some information on that, just so we can plug it into our calendars, so that we can get this thing done. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Ms. Thurston. One of the good things about being chair is you get to go last, so all of the other bullet points have already hit, so I'll keep it very brief. We do have a transitional team, and they have been working diligently on the larger scope of the move. One of the reasons that the board established it, or directed the superintendent to establish it, was to address some of the questions that you guys are having. I'm very confident that they'll get the job done. I'm very confident in the professionals in our school system. We reorganized an entire school district with very few hiccups, and that says a lot, considering the size of our district. All of the details that seem to be overlooked, I know are focused on by both the building committee and the superintendent's office. They've been on top of things so far, which is one of the reasons why we're still relatively on schedule for the school. So keep your fingers crossed and hope for the best, and I have every confidence that these guys will get it done correctly. Again, I'd like to get, as soon as you get some information to us, Dr. Schuman, that would be great, because I think it will allay some of the questions that the public has. And I will agree with Mr. Peabody in the sense that the more information that they have sooner, the better that it is. Family Day, I plan on attending Family Day, because it's a fun day. And my kids like it, and I like it, and I get to hang out with folks, but I will be there, so I hope all of you are there as well.
I've got a challenge.
I will take any challenge that you have.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll see you at the booth with the wet sponges on.
I will do whatever it takes to help those folks out. I will be glad to partake. Rachel's Challenge, again, Rachel's Challenge is one of those programs that we have in town that others like to see and come to us to talk about. And that's one of the gems in our district, the fact that the town committee and so many professionals are unified across the board to help these things. I think it speaks volumes for the town, and that's a huge thing. The NEASC accreditation, that's a huge thing. That's not an easy hoop to jump through. And when our schools, when JFK is accredited at NEASC, it speaks volumes about the quality of education that is delivered there. And that's another feather in our cap. So when you hear, there's a lot of talk, and perception is not always reality. We have a pretty good school system. We're on the right track. We've worked together as a team to make that happen, and I have faith, and I think we all need to have faith, so. Moving on. Unfinished business. New business, CIP radio system update in action, if any.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the most important focuses that we have is on communication. Communication is the only way that our message as a school district gets out to folks, and we've gone to great lengths to ensure that the community and the stakeholders and the board are kept informed through hundreds of school messenger reports, thousands of Twitter and Facebook feeds, the weekly packets to the board, and dozens of special updates. That information has been flowing freely and regularly. The issue of communication that we have fallen down on, though, is our ability to be able to talk with each other and communicate with each other in real time immediately. And the reason for that is that the radio system that we've been using is antiquated. It's broken down, and the radios themselves are in desperate need of repair, and they don't function properly. We are down several radios, so lots of times, individuals that should be carrying radios because they're in isolated parts of schools or in isolated parts of fields are not able to be in contact with the main office and/or the security folks that are in the buildings. One of the things that Mr. Grady asked about was an upgrade on the hardening. In the town CIP budget, the town manager placed $200,000 for the schools to use for security measures. One of the things that we have been investigating, and we believe we can get the most bang for our buck with, is to improve the inter-school communication by replacing our radio system, by putting a radio system in town that will allow us to communicate from school to school and within the schools in real time with all members that should have a radio and should be able to get in contact if they're isolated with students, either out on a playground or in a remote part of the building. We've had Gary Harrison investigating and researching this, and we feel the best way for us to use that $200,000, or at least a good portion of it, is to replace our entire radio system. What we have is simply not salvageable, it's outdated and can't be fixed. So we've approached the town manager on how to go about utilizing those funds, which were dedicated for the school system, for the radio replacement. His response was, all we would need is for the Board of Education to let us know, by way of some type of an action, that they are in support of that idea, that they want the administration to move forward and replace the radio system, and then we'll have access up to the entire amount of money that's in that budget. Mr. Harrison is convinced that we can do it for less than that, and there may be some dollars left over with which we could come back and make some other decisions about security matters. But our recommendation is to begin by having the entire radio system replaced, and then we'll see where we are in terms of the amount of money left in the CIP budget. So the board, if it wishes, can discuss this and take action to authorize us to move forward, or it may take any other action it chooses.
Mr. Neville.
Just a point of information, if we make a motion, we can get the discussion going, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I move that we appropriate that money towards purchasing a new radio system for the district.
Motion has been made by Mr. Neville and a second by Mr. Peabody. Open for discussion.
If I may, I've had a lot of experience with that over the years, and I believe you're still using the ones that we had ten years ago. And at that time, they were close to state-of-the-art, and they were interfacing with the police and so on. I'm assuming, and they weren't, but they were not able to go from building to building.
Correct.
So the new ones, I assume, and we were having difficulty then, particularly at some spots of the building and so on. The new ones, will be able to hit all buildings?
Yes, and they'll be, well, it depends on how far we can get. We'll need to put repeaters around the district in order to pass the information around. We'll go as far as we can with the funds that we have, but the goal is to be able to have communication throughout the district.
Will they interface with the police and fire?
Yes, I believe they will. That's, yes.
At least some of them do now. I know the ones the administrators had, I think, interfaced, but there were still some issues with those things. Is there going to be any kind of built-in thing for replacements and so on? Because one-time purchases without something about a maintenance contract and things to deal with those things, and Chris, you and I dealt with, you know, getting some of the repeaters within the buildings cleaned up, and we didn't have sufficient maintenance funds to do that. Will that be as part of this, or will that have to be included in our budget or the town's budget, or where will that be included?
That's an excellent question. At the outset, when we begin, you know, we'll purchase a maintenance contract for the beginning. I don't know how long that we'll be able to afford or buy one for, and after that, at some point, it will have to come out of the board's operating budget in order to maintain that.
Who will own the radios? The town or the board?
The board.
Okay. Were the last ones, Chris, were those, we got those through the town, I believe, and they were responsible for it at one time?
We are currently responsible for the radios. They were transferred to us.
Okay. So will we become a board responsibility then? So we're going to have to add that to our budget, make sure that we added, to go without a maintenance contract on those things will get us right back in the same situation. So, thank you.
Mr. Peabody, and then Secretary Grady.
Thanks, Tim, because my first question was, one of my questions was on planned Available technologies, have we, has anybody started to look at what available technologies there are out there? I've been around different organizations, enterprises, and they use a hybrid cellphone, smartphone-type technology that I think is available, that dovetails into the overall communication architecture I'm hearing. So I wouldn't like to be able to have the ability to get somebody from the communications field and who handles emergency communications, handles communications such as schools and different buildings, different locations, rather than just say, hey, we're going to have a radio with a repeater. There may be some more cost-effective, yet more powerful technologies out there. I don't know, I haven't looked at it in years. But I would like to see us take a look at that, go down that path before we go enter any type of a contract, open up the scope of vision a tad there. Could be more cost-effective, and again, should be integratable with pretty much everything that we would have. Might be a more expensive handheld device, but it might be more cost-effective as a package. So I think that ought to be taken into consideration and looked into by whomever's doing the work for this. I mean, is it just Gary? Do we have a telecommunications specialist on call from the town, or somebody that can help us out? Those would be questions that I'd like to get answered before we approve anything. So that's where I'm at.
Dr. Schuman, the licensing fees and frequencies for the radios, will they remain the same, or will we have to change that, too?
I don't think I have the information for that. I'd have to find out.
Okay.
Mr. Harrison came to us. I don't know.
Mr. Neville.
Are these, I'm assuming that, I know Gary's been working on a lot of the security stuff to be had, and I'm going to assume that as part of the, at least it was when I was on the security committee, we discussed radios and radio communications and so on. So to get this into the CIP budget, I'm sure there were some discussions at security meetings about the type of, no?
There's $200,000 for any purpose the board chooses to use it for, provided the board approves it and asks the council for the money. It was never, never put in there for a specific purpose. After spending the summer talking with Mr. Harrison about the things that we could and couldn't accomplish, we believe that the radios is the way to go, in terms of getting the most bang for our buck in spending those dollars.
But we weren't in, didn't do this in consultation with security, or with the police, or with fire, and?
I was not involved in any discussions on this, no.
Okay.
Point out, just for informational purposes, the radios have been a topic of discussion for
Years.
Years now. We've known that there's been issues with this because of the construction of the schools. And, I mean, if anybody's got a cellphone knows there's certain school buildings you go into, and you walk in with ninety-five percent power, and after an hour in a school building, you're down to nothing. It's very hard to make a phone call out because of, again, because of the way that schools are built. We have discussed, this was discussed in the security committee, but there were no solid recommendations made. Everyone that was part of the committee and everyone that's been involved with the school security has all attested that we need to do something with the radios. I do believe that Gary was working on looking into some things for the radios, but I haven't, again, heard anything other than that, so.
In fact, Mr. Harrison has spent a number of hours with the police department, communications expert, and that's how they arrived at the specific radio they've chosen. They looked at a bunch of different things, and this was the system he came to us with, because it would be within the budget, and they feel it's the best form of communication.
Mr. Neville.
I don't have any problem with it going that direction. I'd just like to, before we make the purchase, I'd like to know what we're getting and how it interfaces and so on. I think absolutely it's a need, we should be doing it. I'm more than willing to authorize you to go that route, but before we actually expend the money, I'd like to know what we're getting for it, and how up-to-date and comprehensive it is.
Mr. Peabody.
Yeah, I want to echo Mr. Neville's comments. You know, it seems to me that you already answered my question, you consult with the police department and their communications team, or subject matter expert, but again, I'd like to see the specifications. I'd like to see what we're getting, and I'd like to know what the ongoing cost will be for that.
So just a sense of the, sense of the board, can I get a motion to table this, or you want to discuss some more?
I just want, once again, where was the money coming from? I missed that part.
CIP budget from the town.
So it's town money?
Yes.
Like, you said, Peter? I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Do we need to table it?
You should really withdraw it.
Can we withdraw it, then?
I'll withdraw my second.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Motion is withdrawn, any, but, moving on.
I would urge you to expedite it, though, because I know how dire that situation is, and I'm sensing, there's a sense of the board is to do something. We just want to know what we're going to do.
Can we try to get an update before the next, before, ready for the next board meeting?
I will ask Mr. Harrison to pursue getting a quote for a system, which is in detail, so you can see what he's purchasing and what the costs are.
Very good.
Thank you.
Board committee reports, there are none. Approval of the minutes, regular meeting minutes, August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Grady to approve, seconded by Ms. Thurston. Any corrections or discussion? None. Do I have a show of hands to approve? The minutes, minutes are approved. Approval of the council payroll, there are none. Correspondence and communications, Secretary Grady?
None tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Audiences, do we have any second round of audiences? There are no second round of audiences. We have a need to go into executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Grady, seconded by Ms. Ungeyer. All in favor? Show of hands. We are currently in executive session. Thank you so much.